I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And one thing I'd like to say is we also have our new clerk Victoria Pierce is with us in attendance today. So, welcome, Victoria. We'll try to make this as easy as possible, and I'm sure you're going to do just fine. So, on that note, we all have the agenda in front of us. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'd like a motion to accept the agenda as circulated. Motion. Moved by Councilor Trevor Cunningham and seconded by, I see, Counselor Daniel Allen. So, motion on the floor to accept.
Excuse me, John. I couldn't find my unmute. I'd like to put water on the agenda.
Water. That should be under item 6.1 Dry Weather Situation from June 24th Council Meeting, Counselor.
Okay, I was wondering what that was. Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion on floor to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. All right, is there any declarations of conflict interests? I see no one has their hand raised, and however, I do have a declaration of conflict interest. That item would be item 5.2, the repeal of Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw, and the proposed Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw Amendment. I own a business with that could directly affect, so I've asked Counselor Trevor Cunningham to take over those two items, 5.2 and 5.3 in the council item. Is there any more declarations of conflict interest? Seeing none? Move on to item number five, 5.1 Alternative Bylaw. Madam CIO, do you have the floor on this?
I do, if it's your pleasure, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, Council, what you see before you is a draft bylaw that will provide your enabling legislation to carry out your instructions to deliver the election via alternative voting methods for 2020. The bylaw was circulated for your review. There were some minor corrections with respect to pronouns that were gender-specific, and we modernized that language. I, I, what the bylaw does, it, you know, it defines certain terminology that would be specific to alternative voting. It sends out, it sets out, sorry, how certain aspects and certain processes need to be fulfilled. It complies with and honors the requirements of the Nova Scotia Municipal Elections Act. It talks about safety and security. There are offenses and penalties that are defined in that. So, I present that to Committee of the Whole as a draft for discussion and also a request for recommendation to first reading to council.
Is there any discussion on that? Please raise your hand, and I'll record your names as I see your hands go up. Is there any discussion on the? Counselor Durkey, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have read through the document. There are a couple of changes that were made, light changes to some wording. So, therefore, I would like to move that to regular counsel to pass first reading.
So, you're making that a motion, Counselor Durkey, to recommend the first reading to counselors? So, Counselor Durkey?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Gerard LeBlanc. So, motion on the floor to recommend to counsel the first reading of the alternative voting bylaw. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. All right, Council, we also need a second motion in regards to that. Madam CIO, are you going to speak to that first? I see Counselor Trevor Cunningham, you have your hands up, but we'll let the CIO first go first. Do you have a?
The bylaw that will be moving ahead to council will require the alternative polling days be approved by resolution of council. And our returning officer, who's on the call with us today, has recommended that our alternative polling days, the October 8th, 2020 at 12:01 a.m. to October 17th, 2027 p.m. inclusive. And so, I submit to Committee of the Whole that that honors the Nova Scotia Municipal Elections Act. It considers requirements with respect to advanced polling days. And it also considers the fact that there happens to be a long weekend in that window to provide as much accessibility as possible for voters.
Counselor Cunningham, you had your hand up?
Yes, I guess I'll preface, I'll make a few comments before I make the motion that folks hadn't seen previous council meetings and the presentations and so forth that have been done around this issue. This is really the right thing to do in terms of adopting an alternative voting method by electronic means because there's so much uncertainty around COVID. And it's very unfortunate we find ourselves in this situation, but really, this is the best way forward, and we'll make it safer and we'll secure the electoral results to the greatest extent possible. So, it's really, I think it's a really good move for council to be making at this time. So, having said that, I will make a motion that the municipality of District of Yarmouth approve alternate polling dates from October 8th at 2:01 a.m. 2020 to October 17th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. inclusive.
Counselor, you said 2:01. Wasn't that supposed to be 12:01?
Oh, 12:01, my apologies.
All right, so Counselor Trevor Cunningham has recommended an alternative polling date of October 8th, 12:01 a.m. to October 17th, 7:00 p.m. inclusive. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. A motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, a call for the question.
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, counselors. All right, I declared a conflict interest in the next two items, 5.2 and 5.3. Counselor Trevor Cunningham, could you please take over the chair of the meeting, and I will be stepping away. As soon as you're done that, I'll move on to item number six as soon as those two items are done. Thank you.
You're muted, Counselor Cunningham.
There we go. So, the item 5.2 is the repeal of Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw S-088-19. I'd like to entertain a motion from the floor to repeal that Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw. Lauren?
I'll make a motion to repeal that.
Okay, so it's been moved. Do I have a seconder? Daniel Allen, Counselor Allen, second some motion. Motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Oh, yes?
Just a point of clarification. So, the recommendation is to counsel for first reading of the repeal.
First reading of the appeal. Mover and seconder, okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. And now on to item 5.3, Proposed Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw Amendment S-088-20. And this would be for first reading at council. So, yes.
I'll make a motion that we.
Oh. My apologies, Counselor Allen. Ms. Brooks has her, I'd just like to go to Ms. Brooks first.
Sure.
So, just for the benefit of the record, Mr. Chairman, the amendments to the bylaw are material, and that's why we're repealing the old bylaw and we're recommending a new bylaw be adopted. And so, the amendments to the bylaw are around preserving the integrity of the organics waste stream and removing as much plastic or non-compliant material as possible from the organics waste stream. So, that is the essence of the change in the bylaw and is a material change, and therefore, the team is recommending the new bylaw, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so my apologies, Counselor Allen. If you could begin the motion?
Do you want the motion just to recommend this to go to council for approval?
That is correct, for first reading.
For first reading. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we move the Proposed Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw Amendment S-088-20 be moved to regular council meeting for the first reading.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Counselor Cushing seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. And I'll turn the meeting back over to Counselor John Cunningham to deal with the items under six, Business arising from the minutes. Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham. I almost sounded like the, that little skit there was.
Call on Daryl, yeah.
Daryl, my other brother, Daryl. Please be noted in the record that I had stepped aside for item 5.2, 5.3, and that I currently resume my duties as chair of this meeting. Okay, let's move on to item number six, Business arising from the minutes. Item 6.1 Dry Weather Situation from June 24th, Regular Council Meeting. Madam CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Council, as you're aware, the Regional Emergency Management Group has been working diligently to try and create a plan that would speak to what is currently a dry weather situation. The weather has not been identified or labeled as a drought as of yet. There are a number of issues at play in our community. So, we have low wells. We are beginning to see some wells go dry. We had some resources that were once available in our community, and due to COVID and some safety concerns, that bulk water distribution is not available right now. And I am given to understand that the Town of Yarmouth Water Utility is looking at solving that problem, but it is going to take time for that to be solved. At a planning meeting earlier this week, what the team outlined was to be making some water available under Department of Environment approval and public health protocols at the Mariner Center. So, there is some work that needs to be done in order for the Town of Yarmouth Water Utility to approve that and to control some costs around that. And so, it's expected within the next two weeks or so that we will be able to go live with that distribution plan. We are going to require some volunteer staffing in order to honor the public health protocols. So, it's a complex issue. And then, we are also promoting our well-water lending program. This is year five in six years where we've seen extreme dry weather, and we know from the province's senior hydrologists that the water table is just not recharging, it's not recovering. And so, in situations where a well is shallow, whether it's artesian or dug, it's going to be problematic moving forward unless there's a change in the climate trend. And so, we continue to offer our well-water lending program. Council has put a limit on the number of loans it will issue a year at $10,000 or $100,000, depending on how expensive the wells are. I will let council know we have zero applications so far this year for that program. If it's a situation where there's a financial barrier in the household, we are working with the Department of Housing right now to find out how their programs can aid in access to safe water at the household level. And so, we're going to require a number of strategies here to try and support our community. But, you know, even though a drought hasn't, has not been declared, we are moving into action mode to try to support our residents.
Is there any questions or comments from the floor? Please raise your hand. Okay, I seen Counselor Cunningham, I seen Counselor Durkey, and I think Counselor Lauren Cushing. So, we'll go in that order for now. Counselor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Well, the situation is grave, you know, in Yarmouth County. I was on the phone, happening on the phone from somebody from, with somebody, sorry, from Cape Breton a few days ago, and they had rain, and we hadn't had any. We just had a very, we've had a couple of very, very light showers that really haven't done anything, I guess, to substantially improve the situation. So, you know, and I know the town's grappling with technicalities, but this has been a recurring situation. So, I would have hoped that the water authority would have been prepared for this, and apparently, they're not. And again, this is yet another reason why I believe we should be an amalgamated unit. We have some say in this. The Town of Yarmouth owns the utility, and we have no electoral influence over what they do with it. So, I'd like to think they're doing their best, and I believe they are. But, again, people are without water, and it's a serious situation, and I'd like to impress that on everybody. I've had a number of calls and emails, and people are upset, and rightfully so. They should be. We need action.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of concerns I'd like to discuss. One is this is a recurring issue, and each year, it seems like we are being reactive rather than proactive. And I think we have to have something in place on a regular basis so that we know in advance as soon as people start running out of water, they're going to have access somewhere. Because we have many people now that are already having issues, and the thought that we have to wait two weeks for them to get water is just not acceptable. I thought that, you know, with regards to Mariner Center, that if we had an agreement with all three units, that we could just turn the taps on and go. I know that there needs to be a meter put in place, but my understanding was that wouldn't take very long because two weeks is not acceptable for us to get water to people. And again, I'm going to repeat that, you know, these are our Yarmouth County people that are having issues with water, not the town people. And I think it's up to us to provide something for them. You know, we're depending on another unit for that, and I honestly think that's our responsibility. I might ask the CIO if you have any information yet with regards to what it would be to drill our own well. And the reason why I brought that up in the first place, interestingly enough, was after watching Alan Page's documentary, and part of that was about Shelburne, and Alan Page donated $10,000 for them to get a well up and running for a particular area in Shelburne. And I'm thinking, if that's all it costs to get a well up and running, then that's something that maybe we need more than one. But, you know, I look forward to hearing the results of the report that was accessed. And in the meantime, what else can we do? And the other question I have is, are we going to be providing bottled water again? And what do we need to do to do that, or will Remo be doing that? I have people now who are in desperate need of water, families with children that need water. And the two-week thing just doesn't work for me.
Madam CIO, you were, you want to respond?
So, you know, the approach to this is difficult because we want to make sure our resources are directed to where the most need is and demonstrated need. And, you know, when it comes to the municipality working with the provincial EMO partners on making potable water available for free, is, you know, how do you pick and choose who should or shouldn't get that for free? As well as the, you know, the impact on the private sector. You're impacting sales in the private sector, which is impacting the wealth of your private sector. But you're also taking product out of the supply chain for the private sector. So, we are trying to do a better job of that, and we have some ideas in the works about how to develop partnerships with the private sector and have some public support for that to kind of eliminate some of those criticisms we have faced in the past about giving potable water available for free. The water that will be available at the Mariner Center will not be labeled potable, but it does come from the Town of Yarmouth Water Utility, and it's labeled non-potable because we can't guarantee what happens to it between the tap and wherever it's used at the source. So, I would agree with you, Counselor Durkey, that the situation is dire. We are finding ourselves in somewhat of a reactionary situation again this year. And I would say, I would say, by and large, it's mostly because of COVID this year. We knew that we were probably going to have to do some work at the Mariner Center, and we just couldn't get in before the last three weeks to start doing it. And we are depending on some private sector vendors to do part of the work, and the Town of Yarmouth Water Utility will do part of the work. And as soon as those parts are here in Yarmouth, they will be installed.
I just want to say thank you, Madam CIO.
I was first. I was first.
Counselor Cushing, you're next in line.
Yes.
She still has the floor.
Okay. Okay, I agree with partially what Patty was saying, and I heard what CIO was saying. We've known that we've had dry summers for the last few years. Last summer was not bad. But it's been known, and we know that the drought was coming here. And I personally know that down at the other end of the province, they've had lots of rain, and that's where my wife is from. And we talk to them on a regular basis, and they've had lots of rain. So, to base our drought situation on what the rest of the province has, I don't think it's a reliable statistic to take into place. We have to worry both the citizens of the municipality of Yarmouth, and which we should. I'm glad that the town is finally looking at how we can make this happen, but they knew this was going to happen. They knew we were in a dry spell, and something had to be done. And I said it in our last council meeting, I don't expect the municipality of Yarmouth, the citizens of Yarmouth, to get free water. So, that's not, that wasn't, that was not the case. It was before when we used to get it from Mariner Center, and I haul the number of truckloads out of there myself for people in our municipality. But I think this is an issue that's been known for a number of years, and now we still got to wait another two weeks. I just find that so difficult to believe, you know. It's disappointing, very, very disappointing. Number two, Counselor Durkey mentioned that, or asked if we're going to be providing drinking water, as we did a few years back, to the public to come get it at our municipal office. And that was, I think, it was a very worthwhile project to do, a very good program that we done. So, I'd like to see that back in place. So, the only thing I disagree with Patty, I guess, or Counselor Durkey, is that drilled well. I just, there's lots of water in Lake George, and we can cooperate with our municipality, our sister municipality, to make things happen. And to me, if, as a counselor, if the situation resur, I'd be the first one to push in to help our neighboring municipalities with the water situation. Thank you.
Counselor Gerard LeBlanc? Yeah, I agree with Patty and Lauren in some cases. If we wait for the town to give us, you know, to go ahead and supply water to our people, it's going to take more than two weeks, it seems, you know. So, there's the two, still the two weeks. I can't see why we can't spend $10,000 or $20,000, which is not that much, and have a couple of drilled wells and then not give it away. I am not talking about give it away. Have some tokens, the same as when we were at the South Ohio Tower, you know, charged for it so much. Not, I'm not talking about give it away. But, and Trevor, I am not, I'm not getting after you here, but we have unessential sidewalks. Water is essential. This is something that the people need is water. Sidewalks, I go along, Trevor, I hope I can get some too, but some sidewalks in the future. But I'm just trying to make a point that it is not an essential for living, and water is. Thank you.
Madam CIO?
So, with respect to the staff research as being conducted on community wells, there are Department of Environment implications around that, and we have to know what we're getting into. So, it's not just a matter of hiring a well-drilling company and drilling a well. The technology that would be required to create the self-serve mechanism to insert a token or insert a code to get access to water and all that, that technology is not off the shelf at the local hardware stores. And so, you know, there's a lot, there is a lot involved in this. And the municipality of Yarmouth does not have a water utility. And making public water available in Nova Scotia is heavily regulated. There's a legislative regime around it. And so, if council wants to consider creating a water utility and delivering water to its residents, that's a completely different conversation. As I understand it, what council wishes to do is to provide a variety of tools in a short-term measure, kind of a context, to help bridge dry weeks and dry months for a small portion of our year.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, we're in a situation we've been in the last five or six years. I do agree, I disagree with Patty on one thing. We have been proactive, which is where we came in with our well-lending program, which I'm not exactly sure, maybe Madam CIO could tell us how many people have actually accessed it. I know people don't want to go in debt, and I understand that. But unfortunately, this seems to be a reoccurring thing, and I'm really surprised that people aren't proactive and kind of helping themselves. I know some can, some can't. But they're going to end up, at the way we're going and the way council is talking, people are going to end up paying for water, and they're not going to be happy about that either. So, if we start metering it at the Mariner Center and charging for it, and we don't get the Brenton Water Tower up and running, I mean, it's still not going to be free. So, we're talking about giving away free bottled water but charging them to fill their wells. There's so many mixed messages. We've got to make sure we get on the right, we want to promote, like, we need to help our residents, and I understand that. But we also, we have to have them help themselves in some instances as well. And, which is why we, that's why we developed this water lending bylaw to help people because this seems to be becoming the new normal, as I hate to say, use those words, but this seems to be our new normal. We're dry. And I don't know what the solution is. I agree that we're not at this fast enough. We should have been ahead of it. We can only go so far because we do have to, we do have to go through the Water Utility Board in town. And, you know, with COVID, they've got their set of issues that they're dealing with too. Hopefully, hopefully, the Mariner Center will be up and running sooner rather than later. And if we have to meter it and charge, at least then we know what's going on, and if people need it bad, they'll go get it. Like I said, hopefully sooner rather than later. I know that, I believe, I'm hoping, is on the agenda tonight at the Mariner Center meeting. There's a Mariner Center meeting tonight. I'm hoping they'll be talking about that tonight. Thank you.
If I can, Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification for Counselor Allen. So, the issue with the lead time at the Mariner Center is availability of the components. It's not because people weren't planning, that people weren't being ready. It's availability of material in the supply chain.
Yes, I just, I just, as long as when the avail- Yes, I just, I just, as long as when the availability of that material's become present, it's not a delay afterwards. So is everything in place that we know of to be ready, that when we can put the meter on and put the valve on and things like that, that we are go? Or do we still have to approach a water utility and ask permission to use it, or the town, or our partners in Argyle? All that has been arranged?
All that's, all that's done, the purchase orders are issued, the request to the town water utility is made. They'll work with our plumbing firm, everything's arranged, as soon as the parts are in, the work will be done.
Well, then that's something that should be out to the public. That's something that should definitely be out to the public, that we have been working together. Because unfortunately, social media runs rampant. And for some reason, I see a counselor from the town of Yarmouth saying that they have not been approached. This was just a few days ago. And if they have been approached, and this is what's in place, and I believe the public should know that we are working at it, and as soon as we have the parts and we can turn them taps on, it will be good to go.
Counselor Lauren Cushing, then Counselor Patty Durkey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I agree with what Daniel was saying and Victoria was saying about the drilled wells. We say we get the parts, so-called parts are on order, and as soon as they're in, we'll get it in place. Well, regardless of whether COVID-19 was there or not, the parts could have been ordered a long time ago, because they knew what it was. I mean, they could have gone in, somebody could have gone in and measured up, seen what we had to do. So I'm not buying that excuse that we had to wait till this COVID-19 was, so they could order the parts. The parts could have been ordered, that's for darn sure. And the sooner we get it done, the better it is. As for charging for the water, unfortunately, we have to have some type of charge for that water, because in reality, there's going to be some people who are going to want to abuse the water situation to try to make a profit off it for themselves. And that's not the point of this. The point is to help the municipality, residents of the municipality have water. And the only way we can do this properly is have some type of charge for them. Perhaps, once we see this ongoing, perhaps we can interject some type of, how can I say, subsidy for this in our next budget to help citizens out, if, depending on what the charges are. As for the drilled wells, it's easy, it's easy for us to say, or for homeowners to say, "Well, let's drill a well till we get water." If I go drill a well on my property, it's a matter of a few days and I can get approval. If we start drilling a well in the municipality for residents' use to supply them water, as our Cao mentioned, there's a lot of regulations that have to go through. So it's definitely going to be more than two weeks. I bet you, with environment, the way they act, the speed that they go, I'd say I'd bet you it'd be close to a year before we get any type of approval law to have our own water system to provide for the residents and municipality. So it's easy to come up with a quick solution by drilling a well or building a pool or building whatever we want to do. But there's a lot of technical stuff around all this stuff that has to be considered. You know, we say when we request something, let's do some good thought about it. So, but anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was trying earlier to say thank you to our Cao for the update on that information. And I think that it was important for the residents to know that, you know, this is in the works and the parts are being ordered, and that's the delay of the two weeks explanation. So I'm asking for the facts and not making any assumptions about anything. So I thank you. I've suggested the well-drilling program to a number of residents. And again, as Daniel has mentioned, the problem is affordability. And they can't afford to go into debt any more than they already are at this point. I'm just concerned, you know, if anybody has suggestions in the next two weeks, what could some people do? I know there's Paul's, it's about $200 apparently, to get your well filled up by water service. So if anybody has any suggestions that we can pass on to residents, that would be greatly appreciated. In terms of the drinking water itself, yes, people can go to town and purchase bottles of drinking water. I mean, we don't drink our well water, we purchase. So that shouldn't be an issue, and particularly with COVID, the, some of the organizations are delivering, still delivering food and product to people. So that could be really helpful for that. But I'm not sure about, you know, water flushing, I mean toilet flushing, not water flushing. I guess people have to go to the laundromat with loads of laundry, et cetera. But yeah, we still have some people who are dry. And if anybody has recommendations, I'd be happy to hear them.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, respond to Counselor Lawrence. Talk about sidewalks and no time, just to make clear to the public, no time have we talked about sidewalks in relation or is competing interest to water supply. As the Cao has discussed, that we do have a water utility owned by the town. They provided water in the past out in the county. I mean, in my district, we're relatively close to the Mariner Center, but I have had comments from people living in other districts that it's a long drive. And most of these folks, many of the folks that are having water issues can ill afford to take the time and spend the money to drive way into the Mariner Center. So just, I think perhaps we should send also a written correspondence asking, and being proactive now for next year, asking for the town water utility to take all these things into consideration. They should have and should have been acting. And because we do have a longstanding relation agreement for them to use the Lake George watershed to supply the town and many parts of the municipality with water, I would have hoped that they would have, you know, been more proactive than they had been in looking at the concerns and the needs of our municipal residents. But, you know, I don't want to be overly critical, but when you have folks, you know, blaming us for something that's clearly in the town's jurisdiction, and they understand that we can't set up a water utility tomorrow, you know, I would hope that they'd be a little bit more caring and forgiving and have the interests of municipal residents in mind. And maybe they don't, but what I'm hearing here is, and maybe they do, but what I'm hearing here is disturbing. So I think we should write them a letter and clearly communicating the concerns and the growth conditions every year, and perhaps COCA, the province as well. So I'd like to make that a motion, if we haven't already done so.
So Counselor Cunningham, you made a motion. Could you repeat the motion, Counselor Cunningham?
Well, it's to write the town of Yarmouth and the water utility specifically, COCA, the province, whichever departments are most applicable, and, you know, alert them to the recurring water situation, the distance from the Mariner Center, the fact that they provided water at different locations at different times, and ask them to work expeditiously toward the goal of providing water to municipal residents who support the water utility, certainly, is municipal residents. We have pipes running through the whole of the municipality essentially, way up from Lake George through Hebron, Dayton, and South Ohio and all kinds of places. So, long story short is, I think that we should, we should write them a letter saying, "Please be more proactive in serving the needs of municipal residents."
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion, I see Counselor Gerard LeBlanc has his hand up.
Yeah. Victoria, has it been mentioned about what the fire departments used to do in the rural areas? They used to go to the fire hydrants, fill up their fire trucks and deliver water. And the town stopped that a couple of years ago. Has this been mentioned again?
Well, the reason why it was stopped was because of the health concerns around that piece and some liability issues. So that's the reason, that's the reason why it was stopped. The fire hydrants exist for fire prevention and fire extinguishing. They don't exist primarily, that what was happening was the volunteer fire departments were taking water out of the hydrants, and primarily, they were filling up swimming pools with that for a donation to the fire department. And so, you know, between that and the public health issues around water leaving a hydrant and going in a fire truck and then possibly going in a well, there were liability concerns around that, so that's why that ended.
Madam Cao, if I may add about that, another issue too was, was the utility review board must have a record of all water dispensed by the water authority, and that wasn't happening. So if the water went from the hydrant to a truck and then it was delivered somewhere else, that was actually against the law. So obviously, that can't happen. And I will have to stand up for the town and the water utility is that they have to make sure that the water is accounted for. And that way there, it wasn't accounted for. So that practice was probably illegal when it first started. And I don't disagree with that, because there's rules and regulations that they have to follow. Counselor Patty Durkey.
You know, the time we had the drought, like severe drought, which was a couple of years ago, some of the fire departments were helping with water. Is that a possibility, that people could ask the, you know, those that have large wells? I'm throwing it out there.
In what way, Counselor Durkey?
Well, for people just to fill up some tubs that they can use it for flushing toilets, et cetera.
Where would the water come from?
Well, the wells at the fire departments, like our community.
Oh, oh, oh. I'm not sure. So if you recall, in 2000, and we're in 2020. In 2018, 19, that fall and that winter, the region of Queens, the municipality of Barrington, the municipality of Yarmouth, and the municipality of Argyle approved a joint letter to Minister Porter. And we actually recommended some projects in various locations in our communities where we could create some access to water for our residents, but we wanted some provincial support on that. We have not heard back from the minister on that letter. On June 11th of this year, I sent a follow-up letter to the minister asking for the status on that project, and I have not received a response. So one of the pieces around making sure that we involve the Provincial Emergency Management Organization is so that we stretch a dollar as far as it will go in whatever council decides they want to do for a response. If the province is agreeing that in this region we're in a drought, then we have financial support for our response. And I know that's hard for the residents to hear, but it's important to make the resources go as far as we can possibly make them go.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. I do have a couple of points that I want to make, if no one else has any at this time. Now, this is under discussion under the motion. I think it's appropriate, as per Counselor Trevor Cunningham's motion on the floor, to write the water authority in the town. I want to give everybody a little bit of context, because people think that we were a little bit slow to react. I'm going to totally debunk that myth, AKA Facebook and/or the media. On May the 28th, I sent an email to, as the Remo Chair, to the CAOs and the mayor and the wardens in regards to, and this is the, this was the title on it, "It's Dry." This was done on May 28th by myself. I have an email record of it right in front of me. Also, on June the 8th, I sent a letter to the mayor and the chair of the Water Authority asking about the water dispensary out in South Ohio. I did receive an email, but at that time, there was no mention really of the dispensary going to be closed permanently. There was only mention made to the COVID-19 situation, which I could understand at the time. Then we had, I was still getting a lot of calls back then, which is a month ago. And I've been working diligently, and I found myself, as a counselor of the municipality of District Yarmouth and District One, I was getting a lot of calls and concerns from my district about being able to have access to fill the cubes, which would cost roughly $6, $7, or whatever the cost of a token was. And at that time, there was no solution put forward to me through any correspondence or anything. And people weren't asking for the water for free. They were just looking to water gardens, fill their own swimming pools, and they were more than willing to pay. I'm quite upset that, at the time, they say that we were doing nothing. And I have the proof in front of me, like I said, the emails dated May the 28th and June the 8th, that we were trying to be proactive then. I also reached out to the media around the 20th of June, and I have messages about that, about trying to do a news story about the water, the lack of water that was falling from the sky. And I never received really any response. They said, "Yeah, it's a good story idea." However, they never ran a story. And then all of a sudden, we heard is, in the media, that the town water authority said all we had to do was ask. Well, I was asking way back as far as June, or sorry, May the 28th. That makes me a little bit upset when I heard that. But that's all water, to pardon the pun, all water under the bridge right now. There is a plan moving forward, that Madam Cao had mentioned that there is parts and stuff that are, the purchase order has been put out, and there is going to be a solution put forward. But on the other hand, there's one thing that I do need a little bit of clarification on to the Cao is, in regards to whether it be a local or provincial emergency or drought situation, which would activate EMO. Would that, would that come from our council? Or would that come from the Remo or requests from our council to the Remo? Or would that directly come from the province?
So if the province is saying there's a state of emergency and they define it, like they're required to define it under the Act, you know, they could say that this emergency is happening in this community. And if the province does that, it opens up access to provincial resources. If the regional emergency management organization's executive recommends to the councils that a local state of emergency be declared, then that gives legislative authorities for certain activities, and you can apply to the province for some support in offsetting those costs. But those declarations are key pieces with respect to what aspects of legislation are triggered, and A, who has what power, what processes must be followed, and what type of financial resources you might have to deal with the particular emergency at hand.
Exactly. One thing council shouldn't also note that there is a Remo meeting scheduled. I don't have the date in front of me, I believe it's next week or the week after. I think it's next week, I don't have that date in front of me. And I am the chair of that Remo, and I'm sure that's going to get discussed. But I just wanted to make everyone clear that back, starting as early as May the 28th, it was dry then, because I was watering my garden then, that's when I tried to get the ball rolling. So saying that we were behind the eight ball, that's not true at all. Counselor Lauren Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I think Patty was up first, I'll go after Patty.
Sorry about that, I missed you, Counselor Durkey, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, in terms of me commenting about proactive and reactive, the proactive point is that we need to have something permanent in place so that we're not reacting every year to this. That's, I'm not talking about just this time. I'm just saying, in just general, every year, we don't want to have to react every year to this. That if there's a drought, there's a permanent solution in place. And so we just, people can just go right ahead and get what they want.
Point taken, Counselor Durkey. Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Warden. You know, and I'm going to beat this bush again. You say the parts have been ordered to start getting us water. As Deputy Warden said, on May the 28th, he alerted. He alerted the town about the upcoming water shortage, the drought that was coming. He also asked the- He also asked, uh, the media to do some, some type of story on it and it was ignored. So I don't think we're, we're in a reaction reactive state. I think we've been very proactive and thank you, uh, Counselor John Cunningham for, for what you have done. And it certainly, it certainly puts out, it should put out in the public that the council for the municipality of the District of Yarmouth are, were in, are very concerned about the drought situations in the municipality of Yarmouth. And we have reached out because of what Counselor John Cunningham has done to the town, to the media to identify the problem and we have been completely ignored. If, if the parts had have been ordered somewhere between May the 28th and June 8th, which could have been done, you know, uh, uh, people may not have, uh, agree with me, but I know how things work sort of, and that kind of stuff. You could have ordered the parts and we could have been up and running by now. So, uh, thank you, uh, John, for doing what you've done. I think it's, it's, it's a very good point that you made. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Motion carried. I don't know if that, Counselor Dirkie, did you? I, I can't hear you. Sorry.
I need, sorry, I need.
Okay, that's all right. That's all. I wanted to make sure. Thank you very much, Counselor. All right, moving on. Item, uh, 6.2, staff report, dining pods on Cape For Shu. Madam C A O.
So at the request of council, um, some research was conducted on an initiative that was seen to be underway in Amsterdam in Europe, um, that would speak to the requirements for social distancing in a dining, um, context. And so, um, we took a look at the availability of product. We took a look at, um, the accessibility. We took a look at the context of products similar to what was seen in Amsterdam, and to consider beta testing the, the notion, um, at Cape For Shu. So in the staff report, we did, we did confirm that product is available in Canada. There are some accessibility issues with the product that's readily available off the shelf. And there are also some concerns with using those products in the Cape For Shu context with respect to, um, the, the wind speeds that we experienced at Cape For Shu. So in my staff report, I am recommending, um, that, uh, we take a look at slotting, um, a, a more robust unit that speaks to the accessibility units, um, into our, our work for next fiscal year at Cape For Shu to see how, see how it performs and then we can go from there.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Yeah, I, I agree with the recommendation to say, uh, that, that may be part of, uh, of a future plan. You know, something engineered improperly may, may not be too. Um, so anyway, I think it's a good idea conceptually, but, uh, I, again, it needs to be proven a little bit more and, and, um, you know, designed in appropriately if it were to be used, uh, at, at a later date. So I, I agree with that. That makes sense.
Counselor Lauren Cushing, then Counselor Gerard LeBlanc.
Yes, uh, Counselor Trevor Cunningham, I agree with what you're saying there and the C A O brought up some good points. Uh, we are into July, um, and we still don't know what's going to happen with our, with our tourist situation. While we know it's not going to be like it, like it should be, that's for sure. But I don't think that right now is the time to, to, um, to do something like to do those pods right now, but it's certainly something to look into for next year. We'll have the winter to plan it and to see how it, uh, costed out and see where, how to put them and so on and so on. So right now I think, uh, I think it's a good point that we just let sleeping dogs lie for now. And, um, let's look at the future.
Counselor Gerard LeBlanc.
Yeah, I agree with our C A O, but, but the, the one thing that, that bothers me about, about that, that, that report, more, more than the wind was, uh, the hot, hot house or greenhouse effect. You know, I think, uh, uh, in a plexiglass like that, even, even if it's, it's not even that warm, on a warmest day in, in a Cape For Shu, when the sun is shining on a plexiglass little house like that, I, I think that's going to be a problem. Anyways, that's just my comment.
Is there any other comments, concerns? Madam C A O, did you just needed direction from council or, or did you need that as a motion?
Um, I think maybe just direction and what we'll do is we'll add that to the working file for next year's plan and we'll bring it forward again as you deliberate your budget next year.
As the new council delivers its budget next year.
By, by you, I mean council.
That's right. There's an election coming up as we just discussed earlier in item 5.1, the alternative, uh, voting bylaw. All right, item number seven, item 7.1 for action, 7.1.1 Nova Scotia Power Smart Meters. Madam C A O.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's been, there's been quite a bit of dialogue in Nova Scotia around the installation of the smart meters. And Nova Scotia Power is in a position now, um, at this stage of the pandemic to begin reinstalling the, the meters. And they understand that there, um, is probably a requirement for some education around, um, the dynamics around the smart meters. So they're offering to come do a 30-minute presentation to council around the smart meters with a Q and A to follow. And so the, the action item is, uh, would you like to receive a presentation?
I see a whole bunch of thumbs up. So apparently there's no discussion. Uh, Counselor Trevor Cunningham, your finger's up. So go ahead.
Uh, maybe thumbs up. I, I, I agree with the idea of hearing the presentation, but I think we should just be careful. This in no way, shape or form, um, indicates an endorsement of smart meters, right? We're just hearing the presentation. So, so long as that's the issue, I'm, I have no, no problem certainly with hearing from Nova Scotia Power about that. And I think citizenship here also. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And I, I have to agree with Counselor Trevor Cunningham. It's no, absolutely no endorsement. However, I would certainly like to, to learn a little bit more. Information is king. Absolutely. So Madam C A O, you got direction to, uh, set up a meeting with Nova Scotia Power for, I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be virtual because, uh, it depends on the, on, on what the, uh, status of the COVID-19 restrictions are. So.
Counselor LeBlanc has his finger up, John.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Go ahead, Counselor LeBlanc.
Yeah, uh, do you know if, uh, if Nova Scotia Power is going to have a communication with the public on this as a, as a presentation? Or because, uh, I hear a lot of people saying they don't want it. They, 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 uh, the, the, the cost is going to go up. It's gone, it's gone up. They, people have said, I don't know. We haven't had them in, in Nova Scotia here yet, as I know, but somewheres else in, in, uh, in Canada, that the, their rates have, have gone up when they put the, the meters. So is there going to be any education to the public? Or is our, uh, presentation with Nova Scotia Power, is it going to be open to the public or?
So, so all the proceedings of council are, are open to the public. And what we will do for that presentation is, um, we'll create, um, a, a different platform so that we can live feed it. The platform that we're meeting on right now, uh, we, we can't live feed. So we just post the recording. Um, we have to create a live feed where the public can observe, but that the chairperson has control over the meeting. So we will, we will facilitate that, Counselor LeBlanc. Your question is an excellent question and I recommend you put it to Nova Scotia Power when they do their presentation. That it is not this council's responsibility to do the public education piece. But I do think it's a great question to ask so that, um, it is available, you know, their answer is available to the public.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. I agree, Counselor LeBlanc. That, that'd be a great question to, to pose to Nova Scotia Power when they make the, uh, presentation because information is key. So that's a very good point. All right. Any more discussion on that? We'll move on to item 7.2 for information. You all have in your package, a letter from housing Nova Scotia and the tourism tax credit. That's for your reading and any questions you may have, we can, we'll, we'll talk about them either now or, or at a future council meeting. So that's for your information. Uh, moving on to item number eight, new business, item 8.1 signing officer. Madam C A O.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so there's a requirement, um, for an additional signing officer, um, from the elected officials. We're required to have two signatures on, on all of our checks, um, one elected and one staff. And so with the warden's leave of absence, um, we do need somebody to support the deputy warden in that. So the elected official who had joined the warden and the deputy warden on our audit committee was Counselor Trevor Cunningham. And so it would be my recommendation, um, if it pleases council, that, uh, Trevor be added as a signing officer.
I totally agree.
I don't, uh, number one, Counselor Cunningham would have to accept. And number two, it would be a recommendation to regular council if I'm not correct.
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
So I need a motion to move this to a regular council that we appoint Counselor Trevor Cunningham as the, the signing officer.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make a motion to move this to regular council meeting to approve Trevor Cunningham as a signing officer.
Moved by Counselor Allen. Do I have a second there? Seconded by, seconded by Counselor Gerard LeBlanc. He had his finger up before Counselor Cushing. So motion in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, other, other business. Uh, people may be noticing when they watch this video that there's two John Cunninghams here. There is, uh, what, what's going on is, uh, I have my personal computer doing the Zoom live feed so I can see all my fellow counselors. However, just as I tried to set that up, my microphone went kaput on my regular computer. So I have, uh, my audio feed done through my phone. So that's the reason why there's, there's two of me here. There's a picture of my dog, you know, planter and obviously a picture of my, uh, beautiful self. So thank you very much, council. Is there, there's no other business? I'd like to take, make a motion, need a motion for council to, to move into camera. Moved by Counselor Patty Dirkie and seconded by Counselor Allen to move into camera. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Motion carried unanimously. Madam. Thank you very much, everyone, for, uh, rejoining the meeting. Uh, I, I can't remember. Madam C A O, if you will, uh, guide me on this. I take it, do we need a motion to, uh, resume the, uh, committee of the hall meeting?
No, we're, we're, um, we're ready to go with, um, item number 12 on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Actually be item number 11. So anyway, uh, since this meeting is back in order, item number 11. Is there any in-camera recommendations? Hearing none, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment of the committee of the hall. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Cushing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone.